The opiate stabilization?
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, that's just the...
We're covering their IT expenses for things like EMT.
Which one? Okay. I mean, it doesn't really matter. It's just... Yes. Yes. Right. Another copy of the... I'm not in all the specifications. She was just... The fact is, we may want to click here. What? Oh. For sure.
We don't have any, uh, we don't, we don't have anybody from the school singing? Are you ready? I don't want, I don't want, I don't want Melanie to be caught in the middle. Are you ready? Are you ready? Right, buddy? I don't want, I don't want, I don't want Melanie to be caught in the middle.
(laughing).
There's, uh... Good evening. Been a couple minutes after seven o'clock. I appreciate you attending a, a special annual town meeting of May thirteenth nineteen nineteen two thousand twenty-four. Um, before we open, I'm going to read a list of, um, out of town attendees who come for various reasons. Liz Lagal, Superintendent Schools. Michael Cornell, Cornell J. Powell, Executive Assistant Superintendent School, School Committee. Charlie Sealy, Town Administrator. Rebecca Johnson, Assistant Town Clerk, Human Resource Coordinator. Michelle Dahl, Assistant Town Clerk. Russ Hannigan, EB Cam Director. John Clifford, Town Council, Clifford and Kenny. Paula Wolf, Director of Assessment. Matt Paquette, Mitchell School Principal. Kate Byrne, Central School Principal. Bill Silver, Junior Senior High School Principal. Megan Crosby, Treasurer Collector. Jessica Henderson, Library Director. Chris Kenny, Town Council, Clifford and Kenny LP. Jean Marie Joyce, Board of Health Agent. Elginda Welch, Conservation Agent. Liam McGonigal, IT Director. Before we open, if you would mind standing and, uh, move the flag with me. Flags to my right. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. In the true republic of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, verity, and justice for all. Thank you. Ms. Kavanaugh, if you don't want to open the meeting?
Okay.
Katie, is this, can I just interrupt you for one minute?
Absolutely.
Because I think it's really important if we just take a moment and recognize that Mr. Looney has been our town moderator for twenty years. (applause). And we thank you for navigating us through this every year and doing such a good job.
Appreciate it. No way for me, though, don't get inside money.
Yes, the money.
Greetings. In the name of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, you are hereby directed to notify and warn the inhabitants of the town of East Bridgewater, who being qualified to vote in elections and town affairs, to meet at the junior senior high school, one forty-three Plymouth Street in said East Bridgewater on Monday, the thirteenth day of May, two thousand twenty-four, at seven PM. Then and there, to act upon the enclosed articles to wit. You are directed to serve this warrant by posting a copy thereof attested to by you in writing in each of the six public places in town, at least fourteen days before the time for holding the meeting called for in the warrant. Herefore, fail not and make due return of this warrant with your doings thereon to the town clerk of said town on or before the twenty-ninth day of April, two thousand twenty-four, given out under our hands this eighth day of April in the year of our Lord, two thousand and twenty-four, the Select Board.
Thank you, Ms. Kavanaugh. Proceed, Julie. Uh, people who are sitting up in the back to my left, again, your non-voters. Everybody else can vote. If you want to speak, come to the mic. Uh, you'll be recognized. State your name and address. Just your, we know you're from East Bridgewater, but unless you're not, then state your town. Um, so we'll get right into, uh, a special town meeting. Uh, Article One. Uh, Ms. Julie, put a, put a slack to her people.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town raise an appropriate or transfer from available funds sixty-two thousand dollars from account number one dash zero dash three five nine dash three five nine zero free cash, seventeen thousand five hundred dollars to account number one dash two one seven dash five one one dash five one six one, and forty-four thousand five hundred to account number one dash two one seven dash five one zero dash five one four nine to cover retro and signing bonus.
Motion, do I have a second? Motion, may I second? Finance Committee, have a recommendation on this?
Finance Committee recommends the article.
Uh, Ms. Julie, for discussion, if any?
Yes, these, these funds are to cover the cost of the new contract with the dispatchers.
Thank you. Any further discussion on Article One as presented? Seeing none, all in favor of Article One's present, say aye. Opposed? Article One passes with majority. Article Two, Chief Aaron, Fire Department.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer funds from the sum, the sum of two thousand six hundred and forty-six dollars and eight cents from account one dash zero dash three five nine dash three five nine zero free cash to account number one dash two two zero dash five two zero dash five five eight five supplies fire safety equipment to pay a prior year bill from specialty vehicles.
Motion, do I have a second? Motion, may I second? Uh, this vote requires nine tentacles paying an old bill. Uh, Mr. Chief Aaron, for discussion, if any?
I, I, we were notified by specialty vehicles that apparently they're, um, the United States Postal Service lost a couple of months' worth of their mail and they didn't get the bill out in time.
Thank you. Any further discussion on Article Two as presented? Seeing none, all in favor of Article Two's present, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Did I, I need to do that again, because I don't, I do it some, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? I'm going to call unanimous. Uh, Article Three, Chief Aaron.
I move that the town vote to transfer funds from the sum of twelve thousand dollars from account number one dash zero dash three five nine dash three five nine zero free cash to account number one dash two two zero dash five two zero dash five five eight five supplies fire safety equipment to purchase equipment to combat electric vehicle fires.
Motion, do I have a second? Motion, may I second? Uh, uh, Finance Committee, have a recommendation on this?
Finance Committee recommends.
Thank you. Uh, Chief, for discussion, if any?
Yeah, with the prevalence of electric vehicles in our community in the area, that we don't really have the equipment necessary to combat these fires and they, right now, they could take up to four hours of just throwing water on it and we need to have specialized equipment to do that.
Yes, sir.
Lee Aschlich Field, Junior, seven eighty-eight Bridge Street. Chief, I realize you need these for the fire, for the cars and other things. You're asking tonight for twelve thousand dollars, which ain't much. But the cost of these blankets are roughly twelve hundred dollars apiece. It's maybe used once or twice. Are we going to seek reimbursement through third-party buildings, through the insurance companies, when you respond to these scenes? Are replacements on these? Or is the town going to pay them, pay for everyone's use on the bases when they're being used? They could be destroyed very easy. Are you going to provide when it's transported on the low bed, back to the salvage yard? Or are you going to leave it on-site until that car cools down so it won't flare up again? Once you remove these blankets and you recover them, they break up very easy. We're coming into an area where we know nothing about. You can't park them in your garage. You can't charge them. They drive the highways in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, they're not paying the gas tax. We're coming here today to ask for fund for a program that we have no control over. I go in the gas station, I pay forty-four cents a gallon for gas and diesel. They drive the highways, byways, the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, United States of America, they're not paying the dime to use the roadways. How long are we going to go on funding these programs without reimbursement through some parties? You hit a telephone pole, you pay forty-four hundred dollars replacing through the insurance companies. There's got to be some liability on third parties here. If you're going to ask for twelve thousand dollars every time you use them, you see blankets or replace them, the town should be not asking, the insurance companies and the people who buy these vehicles should be paying for them. That's all I got to say.
So I don't disagree with you and I just, just to give you some background information, uh, Glenn Morton from E.J.M. Automotive donated a five blanket to the town for us and right now, he is the only tow company that I'm aware of that if we had an electric vehicle fire in town, we would cover it with a blanket.
Right, I was the tow location today.
Let him finish, please, Mr. Lefield, let him finish.
We'll, we'll cover it with a blanket. This twelve thousand dollars is not just for blankets, it's for a nozzle that goes underneath the vehicle where the battery is. It's for specialized plugs that we plug into a vehicle that may not even be on fire, but if it's in a motor vehicle accident and it's an electric vehicle, we have no way of shutting that thing down without putting this dummy plug in the charging port, which shuts the vehicle off. They're a thousand dollars apiece.
And what happened?
Oh, let me finish, please. As far as the blankets are concerned, our plan is every tow company that wants to participate in this will have their own blanket. When we use ours, they will give us theirs.
Right.
And then they'll go through and bill the insurance companies or whatever for replacements.
I think the town's paying enough for what services being rented to these different places. And when I drive, if somebody goes out with a flatbed and pick up a car, they're required to have that to cover them on transportation, from what I understand.
I'll be honest with you, I'd sit there and let the thing burn for four hours and be done with it, but...
Somewhere along the line, somebody's going to have to pay for this stuff.
I don't disagree, but I, that's not up to me to decide, unfortunately.
Well, it's up to our politicians. Thank you.
Let's wrap it up here. Any, any, any further discussion on Article Three as presented? Seeing none, all in favor of Article Three's present, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Article Three passes. So the majority. Article Four, Chief Aaron.
I move that the town vote to appropriate and transfer thirty thousand dollars from account number two 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 three one eight three five four two seven zero ambulance receipts reserved for appropriation to account number one, two two zero five one one five one four four, cover military, nine thousand dollars. Account number one, two two zero five one one five one four seven, cover OJI, six thousand dollars. And account number one, two two zero five one one five one four zero, cover sick, fifteen thousand dollars.
Motion, do I have a second? Motion, may I second? Uh, Finance Committee, recommendation?
Finance recommends.
Uh, Chief, for discussion, if any?
I have two people on a long-term on-the-job injury. I've had multiple people out long-term sick and I can't budget in the previous fiscal year. It's, I don't have a crystal ball.
Thank you. Any further discussion on Article Four as presented? Seeing none, all in favor of Article Four's present, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Article Four passes.
Thank you.
Let's bring this into our annual town meeting, if you're reading along. So on the annual town meeting, there's something called Consent Agenda. We started it a couple of years ago. And so what we're going to be doing on the very first article is we're going to be voting Article one, five, six as a group. Uh, Mrs. Spagon is going to present the motion.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to take out-of-order Articles one, five, and six, that they be passed by consent in accordance with the motions shown on the two thousand twenty-four East Bridgewater Annual Town Meeting Consent Agenda, distributed to the town meeting attendees this evening.
Thank you. Have a motion, do I have a second? Motion, may I second it? Uh, for discussion, if any, Mrs. Spagon.
I'll pass over to, uh, our town administrator, Charlie Sealy.
Mr. Sealy?
So the, the three articles are the Town's Annual Report, then Article Five handles the ability of the Select Board to apply and accept federal and state grants. And then Article Six is our annual revolving fund article where we allow various programs to continue. The money goes into those programs, expenses come out of them. Um, we do those for the list that's shown in the warrant every year.
Thank you. Uh, any further discussion on Article? So how this works, if anybody has any questions about any one of those three articles individually, you can ask. Mrs. Wolf, come up to the mic and identify yourself. And you can just tell us, unless you're discussing all of them or just one, you can listen to which one you're discussing.
Mr. Moderator, Catherine Wolf, two seventy-two Laurel Street. Um, may I address this to Charles?
You may.
Okay. I, Charles, I'm just wondering, I know we have this in here every year, but I'm, I'm a little confused as to what the limit is, um, that is posted in this diagram where, for instance, on the COA programs, it says it is a limit of ten thousand dollars. Um, what if you get more money in? You're not allowed to spend it? Is this what it means?
There's a provision in the general laws that allows the board selectmen or Select Board to increase that limit without going back to town meeting. But what we do is we check with each of these departments and check how much money they're spending every year and how much they're collecting every year to place the appropriate limits so that it's very rare occurrence that they would hit that limit.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Miss Wolf. Any further discussion on the consent agenda? Seeing none, all in favor of the consent agenda as presented, Articles one, five, and six, say aye? Opposed? That passes. Now, we're also taking Articles thirteen, fourteen, eighteen, uh, out of order, but for the reason that's going to be a motion to pass over. Uh, Ms. Spagon, are you doing this? Yeah, thirteen, thirteen, fourteen, and eighteen. You can just scoop them all together.
One motion. So what do you want me to do? Just make a motion?
Make a motion to pass all Articles thirteen, I can't do it. So make a motion to pass all Articles thirteen, fourteen, and eighteen.
Yep, make a motion to pass over thirteen, fourteen, and eighteen.
Make a motion, do I have a second? Uh, self-explanatory, if anybody needs a discussion, any further discussion? They're basically, they're basically, we're not doing those tonight unless somebody has an issue before we vote on it. Seeing none, all in favor of the motion to pass over Articles thirteen, fourteen, eighteen, say aye? Opposed? Pass over those articles, they're eliminated from tonight. Article Two, Mr. Pika, Finance Committee.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town fix the salaries of all elected officials for the fiscal year two thousand twenty-four and appropriate funds for the payment of said salaries and compensation, including the approval and funding of the town's obligations under the collective bargaining agreements completed in the fiscal and calendar year, the payment of debt and interest provided for a reserve fund and for charges, expenses, and outlays of several town departments for the ensuing twelve-month period through June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five. All is set forth in the budget presented by the Finance Committee and is funding therefore to appropriate from taxation the sum of thirty-six million, nine hundred eighty-four thousand, four hundred twenty-four dollars, transfer the sum of fourteen million, four hundred twenty-six thousand, one hundred eighty-three dollars from projected state aid receipts, the sum of three million, seven hundred thirty-two thousand, six hundred twenty-six dollars from estimated local receipts, and to transfer from ambulance reserve receipts account the sum of one million dollars, and further, the sum of nine hundred thousand dollars from free cash, two hundred fifty thousand dollars from overlay, the sum of two hundred sixty thousand dollars from general stabilization, and one hundred fifty-five thousand, forty-four dollars from WPAT loan estimated receipts, two million, four hundred forty-two thousand, nine hundred sixty-eight dollars from Water Enterprise estimated receipts, and five hundred thousand from Water estimated return, retained earnings, one million, four hundred seventy-three thousand, two hundred sixty-three dollars from Solid Waste Enterprise Fund estimated receipts, one hundred thousand dollars from Solid Waste Enterprise Fund retained earnings, two hundred seventy thousand dollars from EB Cam Enterprise Fund estimated receipts, and twenty thousand, three hundred sixty-one dollars from EB Cam Enterprise Fund retained earnings. All to fund the budget as recommended by the Finance Committee is shown in the final column of Article Two in the warrant for the May thirteenth, two thousand twenty-four annual town meeting.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
I have to add something.
I, okay, that...
Um, as part of this motion, the funding sources include five thousand twenty-nine dollar, a five thousand twenty-nine dollar increase to zero one dash six one zero, other expenses of the library, making the total library budget six hundred sixty-one thousand, four hundred fifty-five dollars, and the total town budget of sixty-two million, five hundred fourteen thousand, eight hundred sixty-nine dollars.
Uh, okay, do I, I have a motion, do I have a second? Motion, may I second? Uh, so does that bring the total, so the total budget, sixty-two million, five hundred fourteen thousand, eight hundred sixty-nine dollars, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Discussion, if any, Mr. Pika?
No, I think, um, the, the Finance Committee, um, really appreciates, uh, the collective efforts of all the town departments um, and, uh, especially the town administrator and town accountant um, in working together to get this budget put together. There were definitely some, um, headwinds in front of the town, um, this year, but, uh, everyone came together and I thank everyone for their willingness to cooperate.
Thank you, Mr. Pika. Uh, any further discussion on Article Two as presented? Ms. Wolf?
Um, I, this means the entire three pages of budget? That's what you mean by this question? I want to make sure I'm on the same page as everybody. So I have a detailed line-by-line budget in front of me and I'm looking at the EB Cam budget. And my question is, why was the, um, proposed budget reduced by thirty-five thousand dollars whereas the other departmental budgets weren't? It's page fifteen at the top.
Um...
In FY twenty-three, we spent three hundred and twenty-five thousand, six hundred and eighty-one dollars and the FinCom budget for FY twenty-five is two hundred and ninety thousand, three hundred and sixty-one, which is approximately a thirty-five thousand dollar decrease in the budget, which is eleven percent. And there aren't any other budgets in here that were penalized, which I see that as a penalty.
I'm going to turn to the lady behind you. Melanie, can you explain?
Yes, um, so the...
Identify yourself, please.
Oh, sorry, Melanie Dean, Town Accountant, um, six twenty-seven Spring Street. The first column, the FY twenty-three actual, where it's zero dollars for EB Cam. EB Cam was still operating outside of the town at that point. And then in FY twenty-four, they had an appropriation of three hundred and twenty-five thousand, six eighty-one. And they requested a budget in FY twenty-five of two hundred and ninety thousand, three sixty-one. They requested a budget significantly lower because they did a major project in FY twenty-four and they don't need to do a major project in FY twenty-five. Um, and the FY twenty-five recommended amount by the Finance Committee is also two hundred and ninety, three sixty-one. So they, um, there was no reduction to their recommended amount from their requested amount.
Thank you.
Hi, uh, I just had a question. Joseph Hayes, three twenty Belmont Street.
Yeah.
Is, so in all, is this a raise? Is this, like, I'm just new to the whole process. Are you asking funds for the officials to get a raise and you're taking it out of different departments?
So what's, what's, I'll turn over, what's presented is the whole town budget? So that's what's presented? And if you have this book, you'll see the breakdown?
Yeah, yeah, so I'm just reading. So I'm, I'm just, so my, I'm just asking you a question.
I, I presume there might be some contractual ways built in?
Taking money out of different things?
We'll turn over to Finance Committee, let him...
Yeah, am I reading that correctly? I'm, I'm just asking.
Anything that's related to negotiated contracts included in the number.
But, but is this what the motion is kind of stating? You're pulling money from different departments to...
So the, yeah, so, um... So, I mean, the, the funds come from various, various sources. Um, we have appropriation from general taxation. Um, we have projected state aid that we receive. We have local receipts, um, that we receive as income. And then there are some departments that have, um, revolving funds or enterprise funds, um, where they're taking money from those funds to offset expenses within their own budget.
Am I totally off-base with the question?
Yeah, I think, so, so, so what you see, what, with all those, come from different departments, is that it's what makes up the budget.
Right.
So boards, departments, uh, submit their request and that's what we just talked about in the last question.
Right.
There are contractual ways that are probably built in, but, but what, so the town says, we, this is what our budget has to be, we have to balance it. Where do we get the money from?
Okay.
So they get it from WPAT, they get it from Water, they get it from, they get it from the state, they get from the, the town levying, and that, that comprises everything that's the town budget. It covers, it covers everything that the town could spend, basically.
Right, and, and where are the funds getting directed to?
To the town budget and they, then it gets spent to the different departments. So these things here...
Right.
And I, I'm just wondering if someone jumped in. These things here go to each department. This is what this department's getting. If you read the columns...
Right, yep.
Well, that's sixty-two million, that's what they're getting. So it's broken down. The sixty-two million is then dispersed to the different departments and how they, what they've asked for and what the town could do.
And we're going to, we're going to vote on this? Is that what this is?
We're going to vote on the total budget, yes.
Okay, and this is the first that everybody's seeing in the breakdown?
I don't know.
So we, I mean, we've been reviewing budgets with the Finance Committee since January and all of our meetings are public, um, and they're all televised on EB Cam.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Page six, actually, in the breakdown.
Mr. Moderator, I, I have a point of, um, well, clear something up for me. I started reading all of this...
Do yourself, please, name and...
Dupuy, uh, Maple Avenue. Okay, forgot, okay. And I, I got to the first, and I did put my glasses on here, whether there, if, if I was told correctly, there's three people that work in the Selectman's Office, right? And the term of that personnel services, those people making ninety-seven thousand dollars a year?
I wish.
I wish, so do I. I turned them in the wrong place. So I don't know where that, they have, you know, two hundred ninety-two thousand dollars divided by three, they're working. And their expenses, it's a hell of a lot of paper for thirty-five thousand dollars. And I only started here and I'm not just picking on you, but I can't believe that people would stand there and say, "Oh, yeah, we'll vote for all these numbers now," without really having a chance to think about them. And it's difficult to hear because you guys should go closer to the mic because people cannot understand you. And I, I just don't understand. I need some explanation. Where do these numbers come from if these people aren't making ninety-seven thousand dollars?
Let's begin the answer to that, to like, talk about that. So, Charlie?
Okay. So for, so for instance... Thank you. Yeah, I'll try. Um, you're correct, there's three people, obviously, besides the Select Board members themselves. We don't each earn ninety to a hundred thousand dollars. We earn different amounts. So for instance, as town administrator, I'll earn more than the assistant town administrator or the principal clerk in the office. We earn different amounts. It's not an even split between the three people. And if you, you know, um, and for the expenses, it's far more than paper that we expend at the Select Board Office.
And the extra forty-one hundred dollars in case you decided to go out to lunch or something?
Well, no, they don't, I don't get paid, um, for lunch. I have to buy my own lunch.
Get paid, but I, I, I just don't know where the money's going. It's ninety-seven, you know...
We, we have various associations that we have memberships with, for instance, the Massachusetts Municipal Association. We have expenses for conferences and such that we need to attend.
But is that listed in personal services?
No, the, the personal services are the salaries...
The salary people?
Yes.
And there's three salary people and you've got two hundred ninety-two thousand dollars.
Yes, I...
Divide that by three, they're doing okay.
Yeah, I understand, but of those three people, they don't earn each approximately a hundred thousand dollars. As I said earlier, we earn different amounts of money depending on the job that we're doing. So for instance, the town administrator will earn more than the assistant town administrator. The assistant town administrator will earn more than the principal clerk. So we, so ju- just as, I'll give you an example here at the school. The principal earns more than the assistant principal. The assistant, assistant principal earns more than the teachers. They each do not earn the same amount of money. So that if you want to divide it by three, yes, it ends up being about a hundred thousand dollars, but we don't each earn a hundred thousand dollars, we earn different amounts.
So where's the rest of it going? Why is it called personal services if it's not going into salaries?
It's for three, okay, because, okay, I'm going to, I earn a hundred and sixty thousand dollars. So that's a hundred and sixty out of the three hundred and two to begin with. So the other two people earn the other hundred and forty-two thousand dollars. And that's not necessarily split evenly either. So that's where the three hundred and two thousand dollars goes. Similarly, if you go through the departments, whether it's fire or police or the council and aging or the library or any of the other offices at Town Hall or the Department of Public Works, personal services will be the wages and salaries that are earned by the employees in each of those departments. Those salaries, in most cases... Those salaries, in most cases, are set by union contracts, in the sense of we are required, you know, we have a contract with the union representing those employees. We are required under that contract to pay them certain amounts per hour. There may be stipends for licenses. We'll pay them overtime if they work overtime, et cetera. And so all those numbers add up to the amount that's in the warrant here for each department for Personal Services.
So rather than let's vote on Motion One here and put all the salaries and stuff in, why don't we see in print how these things are really spent?
Well, I guess...
Because I don't know. I can't ask everybody in here how it is spent on these lines.
Well, the, I don't know what you would like. What we have here right now is what the town meeting is voting on. If you would, I mean, we can't produce it for you at this very moment, obviously, because, for instance, the Police Department budget has about 40 to 50 sub-line items instead of the three or four that you're... But if you wanted to, if we got to name and address, I'd be happy to deliver by hand a copy of the detailed budget to you.
And is there a form that we could all look at at the end of the year, or how much you paid for all of this extra time with this or whatever?
Yeah.
So that isn't accessible to the public?
Yes. So for instance, you'll notice the first column in the budget here for Article Two, where it says Fiscal 2023 Actual.
I saw that. You already know what you're going to spend, right?
Well, it shows you, but you were just asking, is there information available showing how much the town actually did spend in each of those departments? And that's, that information is there right now for Fiscal '23, since obviously that finished, what, 11, 10 and a half months ago? We're not done with Fiscal '24. Fiscal '24 ends in June.
So before next year's town meeting, I can go to the Town Hall, and I can get a form from everybody and who spent what money on what?
Yes, ma'am. And you only need to come either to the Town Accountants' Office or the Select Board Office. We'll be happy to provide you that information.
Okay. Thank you.
Identify yourself again, just for the record.
Joseph Hayes, 320 Belmont Street. I appreciate the time to, you know, answer questions and all this. So just so I'm reading this paper right, you're asking for back pay for this year, a raise for next year, and a raise for the 2005, 2025?
No, no. What we're voting on today is the fiscal year 2025 budget. That starts July 1st.
But can I, Bob, can I?
Yeah.
Okay. You're correct. So at the special town meeting, which we just concluded, we voted on money for the dispatcher's contract. That contract got settled a few weeks ago. As part of the provisions of that contract, we do retro pay back to the beginning of the fiscal year, starting on July 1st of 2023 through June 30th of 2024. So the amount that was approved at the special town meeting covers the increases in pay for the dispatchers during that 12-month period from July '23 to June '24. Because it's a multi-year contract, we will then get to the article, I believe it's Article Three, and there'll be another amount, again, for the dispatcher contract for Fiscal '25, from July 1st of '24 to June 30th of '25. The, if we, if there's contracts already in place, so for instance, right now, we're entering on July 1st, the third year of the contracts with the sergeants or superior officers, with the Fire Department, with the Department of Public Works, and the Clerical Union. Because those amounts are already known and weren't, again, negotiated through new contracts, those amounts are already inside the budgets of the departments that are listed here.
Okay. So what I'm reading here, Select Board, Personal Services, and it breaks down 2003, what that budget was, then appropriations, which I'm just assuming is kind of back pay.
The year we're in right now, the 292, 988, is for the year we're in right now.
And we're not voting, and that's, so Select Board, right? Select Board, the increase in money, right? And we're not voting on this tonight?
No, you're voting, so you're voting where it says Fiscal '25 Department Request, and then the actual amount you're going to vote on tonight, unless it's amended, is where it says Finance Committee Recommendations.
Right.
So the 302, 282 for Personal Services for the Select Board goes to pay those individuals in the Select Board Office for the period July 1st of 2024 to June 30th of 2025.
So I guess I'm kind of, you know, so it's the seven of you, right? Seven, eight, that you're splitting? So let's say we vote, and everybody accepts it, 2005, 302,000, you've got to split between...
As I mentioned to the, as I mentioned, as I mentioned to the previous speaker, the people in the office earn different amounts. Yes, there are seven people who earn wages or salaries in that line item.
Right.
Including the Select Board and myself, the Assistant Town Administrator, and the Principal Clerk in the Select Board Office.
Right. So I guess my point is, you know, I'm just trying to kind of, you know, I'm kind of learning on the fly. I'm new to the town, relatively new. You know, I've been here for about nine years, haven't really gotten into like the town politics and the, so, you know, I just see a lot of, you know, it's a very small town. You know, I come from Plymouth originally, and, you know, bustling and development and all that stuff. I'm not necessarily wanting that for this area. I don't think the roads and the infrastructure really support that kind of development, but I'm not really seeing any town work, like, you know, like the, like the green or the calm. I'm not even really sure what we call it. I know there's something here about being, like adding electrical to it, you know, a budget, but, you know, I'm an electrician by trade. I'm not really sure, you know, what in mind you guys, you know, we're going to upgrade. The only electrical on there, I think, are the lights and the gazebo, if it's the right spot. But I guess I'm getting at is, you know, when's the money going to get into the town instead of to the officials making the decisions? Because if we end up paying, you know, increasing the raise for you guys or the Select Board, you know, and then all of a sudden, you know, we come up to something that we're going to need to fund, well, that's a bigger tax, you know, that we're going to have to pay.
Well, there's a, there's a limit on the taxes that you can pay. You've heard of Proposition Two and a Half, so that the amount, the total amount of taxes that the town can levy each year is limited. There's a two-and-a-half percent increase that's allowed, and that went into effect more than 40 years ago.
Right.
There's, there are not exceptions, but if we get a new house or we get a new build, a commercial building in town, we can increase the taxes a little bit more because of that. But anything more than that requires us to do what's called an override, in which we're saying, which the board Select, the Select Board says, we're going to go not just a town meeting, but we're going to a town election and saying to the town's voters, are you willing to pay more than the normal limit in the property taxes? If you are, say yes. If you aren't, say no. And it would be listed as to the reasons why those taxes are being requested. As long as we're staying within that levy limit, we come to the town meeting and the decisions are made there.
Okay. Thank you.
Mrs. Wolf, I think you had your end up, and I appreciate you waiting.
Yeah. Okay. Kathy Wolf, 272 Laurel Street. Uh-oh. Uh-oh, did I lose it? Okay, here we go. All right. I am on page 15, and I am looking at the Finance Committee budget. And the recommendation was $200,000 under general expenses, and you guys voted in for yourselves, 250. My question is why?
So it's, it's not, yeah, it's not money that the Finance Committee uses on ourselves. It's the Finance Committee Reserve Fund, so that if a department has an unexpected expenditure that comes up throughout the year that wasn't budgeted, they can come to the Finance Committee and say, we had, you know, a flood in this building, and we need $40,000 to repair it. So it's, it's just, it's a little bit of extra money for the town departments to appeal to the Finance Committee should they have an emergency.
A flood doesn't make sense because don't we have insurance for that?
A flood was maybe a bad example, but there are plenty of other types of circumstances that happen throughout the year where departments come to us and ask for a reserve or a Finance Committee transfer.
Okay. So that has nothing to do with the decrease in the, I'm looking at the Treasurer Collector's Office, and there's a significant decrease in their general expenses of, let's see, over like $25,000. Can anybody explain that?
So that was the amount under general expenses was the amount submitted by the Town Treasurer Collector and requested by her?
No, it was submitted as $83,000. And you voted in, you recommended 57,700.
Mrs. Wolf, I can let Melanie answer that.
I can, okay. Melanie Dean, Town Accountant. I work very closely with the Treasurer's Office. The original budget they submitted was $83,000 for general expenses. That was based on the budgets that have been submitted in the past years. We have a Treasurer that's new in the position. It's her first year going through the budget. When she took a closer look at her budget after submitting her first, her first pass at it with the 83, she took a closer look, and there's historically been an account that is underspent. You can see in FY '23, the actual spending on it was 56,544. So she was able to kind of give a revision, which shows as the Finance Committee recommendation is the 57,700. So it wasn't necessarily taken away, but rather it was money that in prior years has historically gone unspent, so the budget was adjusted for that.
Thank you. Mr. Hastings?
Scott Hastings, 882 Washington Street. Just a question. On page eight, page six, you have a total revenues and expenditures of 64.4 million, and it looks like it's balanced, which is great. But we're actually voting on a budget of 62.5 billion balanced. So what happened? I mean, I mean, I'm just kind of curious.
Trying to find out where you're leading from.
So look on page six. It has FY '25 revenue and expenditure budget estimate, and it's 64.4 million, both expenditures and revenue, which is great. But the actual budget that we're voting on is 62.5. It's a million nine less.
I can help you there. So what this page six does is also includes any activity in other articles. So we have other articles in this warrant, like the Capital Project article, which is Article Four coming up. The articles where, I think we'll get to one where we move money for the tower truck from the Fire, 125,000. So any other article besides Article Two is included in this chart, so that's why it has a higher amount.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure. Take the extra $2,000 if you want to give it to him, Scott. Any further, Ms. Wolf?
Okay. Kathy Wolf, 272 Laurel. Page 16, around halfway down, there's a line numbered 195, and it says Printing Town Reports and Warrants. And there's no money. Right below it, it says 195 Total Electricity. And it's over a million dollars for the electric bill that's, so what's going on here? Is it printing of a million dollars? Is it electricity of a million dollars? Is it a typo?
The electricity bill is the correct number. The printing of town warrants was a line item in previous years. We now print the warrants in-house.
But it has nothing to do with electricity?
It has nothing to do with electricity, no, ma'am.
So it's a proofreading error?
Well, I don't know if, what, I'm not going to term it an error. I guess it's more of a historical note that 195 used to be the printing of town meeting warrants.
But you've labeled electricity 195.
Yes. And so because we're no longer needing the 195 for the printing of the town reports. Well, we're not spending any money on printing town reports anymore.
Okay. I'm just going to say it's very confusing.
We'll try and remember that for next year.
Any further discussion on Article Two as presented? Yes, sir. It'll be your last time up unless you have something, because we try to limit how many times people get up. But you're more than happy to speak. Just so you know, just because you said you were new.
Yeah.
All these committees meet year-round, and they have, they have, they have to be poked at Town Houses. You can find out where these meetings are located for future use.
Joseph Hayes, 320 Belmont Street. Where does the money, so, you know, you're budgeted, you know, we, all that stuff, there's always, it's an increase. So where does that money come from is kind of the only question I have.
Well, so if you go back to Article Two, when Dan was reading the motion, all the money comes from a number of sources. Obviously, the main source of money for funding the town budget comes from property taxes. We also get state aid primarily for our school system, but also just general aid and a few special programs. We have local receipts, such as motor vehicle excise, building permit fees, alcohol licenses, you know, hodgepodge of fees, licenses, and permits that we receive. We receive money, obviously, for Water Department operations, also for solid waste. And we go into that detail in the motion. So we're increasing the budget. You're correct, because many of those sources of funding have also increased. The property taxes, I mentioned, we can increase approximately two-and-a-half percent per year. So that goes into play. We are receiving a little bit, not a lot, more state aid than we received in Fiscal '24. We have a little bit more money coming in for motor vehicle excise, as an example, than we had for '24. Again, that allows us a little bit of an increase. So those are the places where we're seeing increases in the available revenues for the town to spend then on the budget.
Okay. So we're asking for an increase with all of these other excise taxes for the car?
Well, you don't get any, the, for instance, the rate, the motor vehicle excise rate is pegged at $25 per thousand. Reason we see increases is people keep buying new cars that are more expensive, and then multiply it at the $25 per thousand, we see a little bit of an increase. But the town itself doesn't set the tax rate for motor vehicles, as an example. Same thing.
Sorry to interrupt. So my taxes are going to go up? Is this?
Yes, your taxes will go up because of this budget.
Okay. Thank you.
Joe, just, Joe? So do you have this paper?
I don't believe I have that one.
Okay. Well, that tells you exactly where all the money's coming from. And I think that's what's on. So that explains where the money's coming from. I think it's on the screen in front of us, too.
Yeah, I was looking for it.
Taxes are not going up because of this budget.
I'm sorry?
We're allowed two-and-a-half percent increase per year.
I don't think I can hear you, David.
Was that this one? It's on? We're allowed a two-and-a-half percent increase on an annual basis. Ever since I've been in town, 34 years, it's only gone up two-and-a-half percent. There's never been an override. So all the revenue that comes into this town is on page six. Like Charlie said, the excise tax, other sources of revenue, we have a reserve fund, we have a capital stabilization fund. We get free cash, which isn't really free cash. Free cash is the money that if they budgeted 100,000 last year on a line and they spent 75,000, 25,000 comes back to the town. I will tell you that this year, you're going to see a lot of fluctuation in some of these lines, because the Finance Committee, due to the situation in the town and the finances and the increased cost for everything, that we had to go actually with our departments, line by line, and say, just because this was appropriated last year, you didn't spend it. We're not funding it there. That's not a good way to do a budget, just based off what was appropriated. You have to do, you have to connect the dots, and you have to say, this is what the reality is, this is what you're spending, that's what you're going to get.
You know...
So this year, more than any other year, you're going to see a lot of fluctuation in some of these line items. You know, the Treasurer's Office was a good example of it, et cetera. New people, new faces taking looks at things. We caught, you know, together, it was a tedious task this year. And I would encourage you, Finance Committee meets once a month, Capital Committee meets, they're live, they're posted, they're open to the public. You can participate in any one of those meetings, and we will go through each and every line with you. The committees actually get an expense budget for what was actually spent in the last quarter or the last month, et cetera. So we're constantly watching where the spending is. So it's all out there. It's all public and available. You can get it anytime, but you can really get educated on this. The discussion of all the revenue sources take place at the Finance Committee, on TV, open to the public. So there's so many different avenues and resources where this revenue, where this comes from. There's an enterprise fund, there's stabilization funds, all sorts of stuff.
Right.
It's all out there.
So just kind of repeating, so for 34 years that you've been in town, the, you've always asked for as much taxes... the, you've always asked for as much taxes to pay as, every year?
Your taxes are set every year.
Right, but, but, but every year we're voting to increase them by two and a half percent?
Well, every, no, sometimes the budget increases six percent because of other revenues. Taxes will increase two and a half percent. That's Proposition Two and a Half by the Massachusetts State Legislature. The most you can raise taxes, your flat tax base is thirty million dollars, next year it's thirty million times two-point-five percent. That's it.
But why? I'm not, so, so I'm not really, I'm not really seeing any return on the taxes in the town. You guys are asking, you know, for, for the Select Board to, to get more money in the past three years, but I'm not really seeing any development in town or improvement, or, tell me if, I mean, I've been here for nine years.
There's a sewer district within.
I got a, I got a half a sidewalk all the way up down Belmont Street. I mean, sometimes.
Sewer district that went in, was in works for years. We're buying ambulances, we're buying fire trucks, we're buying police cars, we're funding things in the school system. All those costs go up every year. So just the basic operating cost, we are not in a position financially, and it's going to get a little worse over the next few years, we are not in a position financially to start doing all sorts of elaborate things. The Board of Selectmen, I will tell you, in my opinion, have done a wonderful job soliciting things we worked on with Compass Medical, all that stuff that was going on there. We got the sewer district thing going, there is development, there's development going on at the end of Central Street, there's development going on at that end of town. What we can develop, we're developing. We are landlocked. We are landlocked here, away from the highways, we don't have a municipal sewer system, we're not getting a lot of industrial base.
But, but, but it works the opposite way. If you have high, high taxes for a small town that doesn't really offer much, you're not going to have people to come into the town to want to buy property and to live here. I mean, we.
Town's doubled in size since I moved here.
We, I mean, I lived in Plymouth, right? We moved here probably two or three years after the school was built, and we're probably, we're still paying on the taxes on that, you know, even though I do have two small kids. But I, I mean, the state's taxes are high, the town taxes are, are getting high. And again, like, there, there is development, but is there a lot of development? Like, you know, again, I, I live near Belmont Street, they get this big giant warehouse that's sitting empty, you know, with.
So I'd be glad to have a discussion with you after this meeting about all this. Very, very happy to do that. But, you know, if we, you can come to these meetings, and when the DPW says, we need five-hundred-and-forty-thousand to fix the roads, well, we don't want to pay that, so we're not going to raise the taxes, you can only get two-hundred.
I, I mean, that's kind of silly, right? I mean, we, we obviously need the roads, you're going to, you're.
All right, guys, Mr. Moderator, can we move it? Cut off here.
Moderator, I'd like to move the question, please.
Yeah, I'm, I'm cutting it off here now. It has been a motion to move the question, which means we end deliberation. I will, if, if anyone who hasn't spoken, who hasn't spoken would like to speak, on any of this, I, I will entertain. One who hasn't spoken yet, he'll be the last speaker. The question's been moved. Mr. Wydenfeller, please identify yourself and address, please.
Jim Wydenfeller, forty-one Leeway. I think a lot of the confusion comes in. We talk taxes, we talk levies. You and I know what two and a half means. Person in the audience thinks, my taxes can't go up more than two and a half percent. That's not the way it works. When they say two and a half percent, the total amount of taxes that the town can raise, or the levy, can only go up two and a half percent. Your taxes is also dependent on the assessment of your property. It's also what the town spends. There's also a provision, that's not talked about too much, for an underwrite. If the town's got a lot of money, or the people in the town have handed up to here, they can go in for a tax override. As far as I know, there's only one that's actually happened in. But there's a big difference between the levy and what your tax bill is.
There's a discussion on Article Two. This requires a two-thirds vote. All in favor, two to the left, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I declare two-thirds vote. Article Two passes. Article Three, Mr. Sheedy, Select Board.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town transfer from free cash, account number one-zero-three-five-nine-three-five-nine-zero, the amount of fifteen thousand, one-hundred-and-ninety dollars, and fifteen thousand to account number one-two-one-seven-five-one-one-five-one-six-one, to fund signing bonus for the police department, and a hundred-and-ninety dollars to account number one-one-four-one-five-one-zero-five-one-seven-zero, for a stipend for the assessor.
I have a motion, I have a second. Does Finance Committee have a recommendation?
Finance Committee recommends the article.
Mr. Sheedy for discussion, if any.
It's as printed, there's money that agreed to police contracts, and the a hundred-and-ninety dollars that we give our assessor for being certified as an assessor every year on her contract.
Thank you. Any further discussion on Article Three as presented? Seeing none, all in favor of Article Three as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Article Three passes. Article Four.
Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote to transfer from account one-zero-three-five-nine-three-five-nine-zero, free cash, four-hundred-and-ninety-one-thousand-eight-hundred-and-eighty-seven dollars, transfer from account eight-zero-zero-three-five-nine-three-nine-one-one, capital stabilization fund, five-hundred-thousand dollars, and transfer from account two-four-zero-three-five-nine-three-zero-two-one, downtown sewer revolving, forty-thousand-nine-hundred, to fund the above projects.
I have a motion, I have a second. Finance Committee recommendation?
Finance Committee recommends the article.
Mr. Walsh for discussion, if any.
Capital Committee, reviewing all the capital requests this year, and understanding where our resources were, have all unanimously supported these particular capital projects.
Thank you. Any further discussion on Article Four as presented? This again requires two-thirds. All in favor of Article Four, as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Article Four passes, we're one and two-thirds. Article Seven, Ms. Julius, Select Board.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to appropriate and transfer from account number one-dash-zero-dash-three-five-nine-dash-three-five-nine-zero, free cash, to account number one-dash-nine-one-zero-dash-six-zero-one-four-dash-five-one-six-seven, employee retirement for sum of one-hundred-and-sixty-four-thousand-seven-hundred-and-sixty-six dollars and ninety-three cents to fund the contractual cost for four retiring town employees. One-hundred-and-three, five-hundred-and-eighty-one for two fire department employees, thirty-nine-thousand-one-eighty-five and ninety-three cents for one COA employee, twenty-two thousand for one town hall employee.
I have a motion, I have a second.
I'm sorry.
Finance Committee recommendation?
Finance Committee recommends the article.
Ms. Julius, discussion, if any.
So this is to fund anticipated retirements in FY twenty-five. People are entitled to pay out for unused sick and vacation time, and so we owe that to them.
Thank you. Any further discussion on Article Seven as presented? Seeing none, all in favor of Article Seven, as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Article Seven passes. Article Eight, Chief Attorney, Fire Department.
Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote to appropriate and transfer from account number Ambulance receipts reserved for appropriation to account number eight-zero-one-two-two-nine-one-one-four-nine-seven-two. Capital stabilization, transfer from special revenue for Tower One, the sum of one-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand dollars.
I have a motion, I have a second.
Second.
Finance Committee recommendation?
Finance recommends the article.
Chief, for discussion, if any.
This is the final payment from the ambulance account fact of the capital stabilization fund for the tower truck that was approved at the twenty-twenty town meeting.
Thank you. Any further discussion on Article Eight as presented? Seeing none, all in favor of Article Eight, as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Article Eight passes. Article Nine, Chief Jenkins, Police Department. Congratulations on your appointment, Michael.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to appropriate transfer for account number one-zero-three-five-nine-three-five-nine-zero, free cash to account number one-dash-two-ten-six-zero-one-five-fifty-eight-fifty, the sum of five-thousand-five-hundred-and-fifty-two dollars to fund bulletproof vests for police officers needed in the FY twenty-five year.
I have a motion, I have a second. Finance Committee recommendation?
We recommend the article.
Chief Jenkins for discussion, if any.
Our vests are good for five years, we have to replace them, I have four offices coming up fiscal year twenty-five that have to be replaced.
Thank you. Any further discussion on Article Nine as presented? Seeing none, all in favor of Article Nine, as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Article Nine passes. Mr. McGowan, Select Board, Article Ten.
Mr. Moderator, to see if the town will vote to appropriate and transfer from account number six-one-zero-three-five-nine-three-five-nine-zero, retain earnings, to account number six-one-one-two-two-five-two-zero-five-eight-five-zero, a sum of the cost to cover Apple Max for EB Cam, or to take any other action thereof.
I have a motion, I have a second.
Second.
Finance Committee recommendation?
We recommend the article.
Mr. McGowan for discussion, if any.
No, just a transfer.
Okay, any further discussion on Article Ten as presented? Seeing none, all in favor of Article Ten, as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Article Ten passes. Ms. McGowan, Select Board, Article Eleven.
Mr. Moderator, to see if the town will vote to appropriate and transfer from account number one-zero-three-five-nine-three-five-nine-zero, free cash, to account number one-one-nine-two-five-two-zero-five-three-four, the sum of two-hundred-and-sixty-seven dollars and fifty cents to the telephone, for telephone payments, fund telephone payments, or to take other actions.
Thank you. I have a motion, I have a second.
Second.
Finance Committee recommendation?
We recommend.
For discussion, if any, Mr. McGowan?
No.
For discussion, any further discussion on Article Eleven as presented? Seeing none, all in favor of Article Eleven, as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Article Eleven passes. Article Twelve, Mr. Sheedy, Select Board.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to appropriate and transfer from account number eight-zero-one-two-two-three-six-zero-four-four-six-eight-zero, opiate stabilization fund to account number one-one-five-five-five-two-zero-five-three-one-four, the sum of ten-thousand dollars to cover IT costs for Plymouth County outreach.
I have a motion, I have a second. Finance Committee recommendation?
We recommend the article.
Mr. Sheedy for discussion, if any. Mr. Sheedy's going to take this one.
So the town has now a stabilization fund for the monies that we've been receiving on an annual basis from the opioid settlements with the drug companies, some of the pharmacies, et cetera. Plymouth County Outreach, while it's not a town entity, uses the town's IT systems, including our email service and such. And the cost has been melting up as they've been adding employees. This money would cover their portion of the costs for our IT operations. I think our, I think the Select Board's hope, along with my own, is that in future years we'll be able to do, take other actions with this money that we're receiving, since we're going to be receiving it for several more years, more than likely working with other communities to provide services. But right now Plymouth County Outreach does an excellent job of providing services to those who are facing addiction, or the families of those who are facing addiction, and we wanted to support their efforts.
Thank you. Any further discussion on Article Twelve as presented? This requires two-thirds vote. Seeing no further discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Article Twelve passes, we're one and two-thirds. We're on to Article Fifteen, Ms. Julius, Select Board.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to charge reach written demand issued by the tax collector, a fee of twenty dollars, to be added and collected as part of the tax as authorized by Mass. General Law, Chapter Sixty, Section Fifteen, effective July first, two thousand and twenty-four.
I have a motion, I have a second.
Second.
I'm not sure, does Finance Committee have a recommendation on this?
We recommend the article.
Thank you. Ms. Julius, for discussion, if any.
So the demand fee currently for a late fee is fifteen dollars. This fee has not been increased since FY twenty-ten, and the cost of issuing a demand like labor and postage has increased in the last fourteen years.
Thank you. Any further discussion on Article Fifteen as presented? Seeing none, all in favor of Article Fifteen, as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Article Fifteen passes. Article Sixteen, is Leah Herman here from the library?
Jessica, I think we need, we need one of the trustees.
Yeah, is there, is there anybody from the board trustees of the library?
The Chair, Leah, could not make it tonight. I am Jennifer Laugan, Secretary of the Library Trustees. I move that the town vote to appropriate and transfer from account number one-zero-three-five-nine-three-five-nine-zero, free cash, to account number one-six-one-zero-six-zero-one-six-five-zero-zero-five, the sum of two-thousand-six-hundred dollars to hire an appraising firm to determine values for fine arts located at the East Bridgewater Public Library.
I have a motion, I have a second.
Second.
Finance Committee discussion, Finance Committee recommendation?
We recommend the article.
Ms. Laugan, for discussion, if any.
No, this is just, we have some valuable items in the library, and we would like to take care of them accordingly, and we need the appraisal for that.
Thank you. Any further discussion on Article Sixteen as presented? Seeing none, all in favor of Article Sixteen, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Article Sixteen passes. Thank you, Ms. Laugan, stepping up.
Well, we need, she's here for seventeen, too.
I'm going to stay right there.
She's got, she's here for the next one, too. Article, Article Seventeen.
Okay, I move that the town vote to appropriate and transfer from account number one-zero-three-five-nine-three-five-nine-zero, free cash, to account number one-six-one-zero-six-zero-one-six-five-zero-zero-six, the sum of five-thousand-five-hundred dollars to fund restoration and archival framing for items located at the East Bridgewater Public Library.
I have a motion, I have a second. Second, Finance Committee recommendation?
We recommend the article.
Again, Ms. Laugan, for discussion, if any.
No, we do have some items that do need to have this preservation done, and that is the amount needed to do that.
Thank you. Any further discussion on Article Seventeen as presented? Seeing none, all in favor of Article Seventeen, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes, thank you.
Thank you.
Article Nineteen, Mr. Sheedy, Board of Select, Select Board.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to amend the Town of East Bridgewater General Bylaws, Part Three, offenses and penalties. I add in a new section, one A, as follows. One A is ban on the sale of alcoholic beverages in certain containers. The sale of alcoholic beverages and containers less than or equal to one-hundred milliliters is prohibited within the Town of East Bridgewater, effective January first, two thousand and twenty-five.
I have a motion, I have a second. Second, does Finance Committee have a recommendation on this?
We do not.
No recommendation. Mr. Sheedy for discussion, if any. Yeah, according to the microphone, I'm going to have Mr. Sheedy to report it, so we can.
This basically is asking the residents for the small, I guess what they are called, our NIPS.
Yeah.
Which we do see scattered all over town, in not just East Bridgewater, every town. And we're just trying to clean up that portion of it, and it's up to you people to make that decision.
Thank you. Sir, identify yourself, please.
Kevin Underkirk, three-eighty-nine West Union Street. So that you're trying to ban the sale of nip bottles because people are dropping them around, well, it's not really the fault of the liquor store that they're dropping them around. To make that illegal to be sold is, I don't know, I find it ridiculous. If you want to go after people who are littering, maybe you can go out, give them a littering fine, or something along those lines. Banning the sale of something because they're popular, I find foolish, I would vote against this.
Thank you. Sir?
Jim Brown, forty-one Tidy Terrace. I have to agree with the gentleman before, it seems to me absurd to ban an item because people throw it on the ground. If we were going to ban items that people throw on the ground, we'd have to ban an awful lot of things. I personally haven't had one of those NIPS in about forty-five, fifty years, but I am worried about the impact that will have on the business people. This particular item has come up in many other towns here in the Commonwealth lately. In some it's passed, in others it's been turned down. Some it's had to go actually to the town election, and not just gone to the town meeting. Has anybody heard from the businesses on how much of their business they're going to lose? I'd hate to see another loss of tax revenue by businesses going out.
Thank you.
Hi, Donna Patterson, I live at eighty-nine Riddell Road. I walk around this town every day. I do a five-mile loop from Riddell Road through the center, around the town, every day. And I can tell you that I see more Dunkin' Donuts cups, straws, water bottles, pieces cups, straws, water bottles, pieces of seat belts, people things, things people throw out of their car than I do nip bottles. I do see them around town, but I don't see them as being prevalent to what's left as trash around town. I do think that littering is the, is a offense that is not really enforced. If you go to any of the playgrounds, you'll see that around the trash barrels that are on the ground, there's plastic cups, there's nip bottles, there's everything, wrappers from Dunkin' Donuts and other places. I think that this would be a reason that people will go out of town to buy nips, it is sold, I buy them for different events myself, as gifts, showers and whatnot, they're a very reasonable thing to have and purchase. I think that you're penalizing one business for all of the litter in town, and I don't think that's fair.
Thank you. Any further discussion, Ms. Wolf?
Yeah, I live on Laurel Street, Kathy Wolf. I see a tremendous number of nips, in fact, you can, between the cigarettes and the nip bottles, you know a person's habits, because they tend to run out of that nip right when they pass your house, and they chuck it out the window. Well, the nips mean these individuals are drunk driving, and anything that this town can do to bring down the number of drunks that are on the road, and if it means getting rid of the nips, I'd be very in favor of that, and I really don't think it's gonna damage the economy of the town. We'll just put up another tattoo parlor. Thank you.
Any further discussion on Article 19 as presented? Seeing none, all in favor, all in favor of Article 19, say aye. Opposed? The moderator determined that the no's, don't, that the no's have it, it fails. Article 20. Ms. Julius, Select Board.
I move that the town vote to approve the door-to-door solicitation bylaw as written in the warrant.
Motion over second. Finances Committee, recommendation? No recommendation. Ms. Julius, for discussion, if any?
Yes, so as you may recall, we actually approved this last year, but when we sent what we approved to the Attorney General, they had some things in it that they didn't approve of, so we incorporated the changes that they said we need to, and then we're bringing it to you to approve again.
Thank you. Any further discussion on Article 20 as presented? Ms. Wolf? Break in the action. Anything you guys want to share?
Okay, yes, yes, I, I actually feel this is a ridiculous...
You know I'm just teasing.
...article. I'm Kathy Wolf, 272 Laurel Street, again. If we are going to make someone go through these hoops to, just to solicit in this town, we may as well completely ban solicitation, because what this requires is an unbelievable amount of work, and you have to plan it months in advance before you're even allowed to do it. You have to go out and get fancy stickers for your car, you have to, you know, go through query checks, you have to do this, you have to do that. It's worse than applying for a daycare license, and if that's the attitude this community has about door-to-door solicitors, we ought to just ban them outright, and arrest anyone who comes by, because that's what you're asking for in here, it's crazy. And if we have 100 people a year complaining about this, and I don't think it's anywhere near that, we have over 5,000 households, okay, so you get one person every 10 people, and you've got, what, 5% of the population? And I'm one of those old people that ought to be complaining, right? I don't care, they're just trying to make a living. So, if you don't want them in your home, close the darn door and lock it. It's not, you know, you don't have to be a genius to not let somebody in, so that's how I feel about it, I just think it's a waste of time.
Can I, Ms. Julius, can I ask a question? Is this dramatically different than what we passed, or the, just curious, did we pass this last year?
We did, I would defer to Mr. Sealy.
Mr. Sealy, is this dramatically different from what we passed?
No, it's about 98% the same. The two changes that the Attorney General's office requested were, A, that there be a time limit for the police department to make a decision about issuing the permit, and also the standards and criteria that they would use to issue the permit. Those were the two changes the AG's office asked to be incorporated. The rest of the bylaw is the same bylaw that was approved a year ago.
Thank you, Ms. Sealy. I'm gonna go with this gentleman first, and then I'll come back to you, Mr. Slitsfield. Sir?
Thank you, I'm David Phillips, from 215 Plymouth Street. I'm in favor of this. Last week, I think on the social media in East Bridgewater, I posted, hey, that people are coming around and knocking on doors, and it's become a problem, and that, it was a concern enough for me that I texted my own family, just to let them know that this is out there. And the very next morning, that next afternoon, when we were at work, someone came to our front door, opened the screen door, and tried to open the front door to get in. And our daughter came to the door, knowing that I had already texted them on this, and nicely confronted her, and she said, oh, I'm parked up the street. My daughter followed her, took pictures, went to the police, they took very good care of her, they found this woman and advised her that she could not do this. It's very frightening to be at home and have somebody just try to walk through your front door, so I'm in favor of this. Thank you.
Mr. Slitsfield.
Leon, I'm Slitsfield, Jr., 788 Broad Street. Is there a statue on the books already in the Town of East Bridgewater that prior to coming into town, you must solicit with your chief of police that you're going to solicit with in said town? Most cities, towns have this ordinance for years. Is this a new revised edition, and is it a way for the towns to pick up more money? You cannot run this program for $50, do the query check and everything else as being asked. Also, when you're soliciting within the city towns, you cannot use mailbox, because mailbox, even though on your house, does not belong to you. Once that mailbox is attached to the house, it becomes federal property. You cannot leave anything in a mailbox without proper stamp. So, we have enough statues on the books already, we don't want to burden ourselves with more. We've come, I'm 81 years old, I've lived all my life this way. We've got statues already, if we know how to enforce them, they can be enforced within said cities, towns within Commonwealth Massachusetts. Tonight, you've been speaking on many things, on state budgets and other things. Some of these words in these budgets here are coming in referring to the state of Massachusetts. Massachusetts is another state, it's a convoc, Pennsylvania, Massachusetts, Virginia, Kentucky. When you refer to grants or any legal documents, you never refer to the state of Massachusetts, you refer to the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. Any illegal document going into said court says the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, not the state. We're coming to areas that we've had on years for over here. I grew up in the town here, we didn't have that many problems here. My cousin was chief of police here, Walter Bonoyd. My cousin was chief in Bridgewater, Jimmy Elliott. They've had very little problems. It's enforcing the rules and regulations when these vendors come into the city towns, that they're required to report to the police station and submit proper documentation when they're soliciting, otherwise they don't come into town, it's very easy.
Joseph Hayes, 320 Belmont Street. So, you know, there's a lot of talk about, like, reaching out to the police, I mean, these are bigger companies that are, that are out, like, hiring people to solicit door-to-door. So, as a licensed electrician, I'm not sure if this thing can be amended a little bit, but you can go onto certain town websites and put in your, your business license, your electrical license, and then I have to pull a permit and pay a fee, depending on the size of the job. Why couldn't it be a little similar to that, you know, just a solution? The $50 fee with these bigger companies is, is really nothing, I mean, I'm sure you could probably get, you know, just for the, the right of the, the opportunity to solicit, you could probably increase the permit fee to probably a couple thousand, you know, for, for these businesses, big businesses to solicit. Just like the website for electrical, you know, I've got to put in my personal information, my electrical license is on the state website, so, I mean, it could be a similar setup where it's not bogging down the police department, trying to, you know, you know, just keep an eye on these people. But I don't know if it's just a good solution, but you probably get a little more money because it is a bigger company, and maybe set up some kind of website where they can go in, log in, this person's in the, in this zone, that person's in that zone, what this business does, and then, you know, just go from there, but, thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Yes, sir? Do you have to identify yourself again?
Kevin Endicott, 389 West Union Street. I was just wondering, I mean, couldn't it be as simple as notifying the police that you're gonna be going door-to-door in the town? As far as that gentleman's story over there, where someone tried their door, the inside door, which is kind of insane, that person was probably out to do wrong, and whatever law you make up, they're gonna do wrong anyway. I mean, I'm, I'm more of a proponent of less laws and just more action, if they came to the police, let them know that they're gonna be in the town, the police will be all right, and have an, have an idea of what's going on. But doing all this query checks, are you out of your mind? For someone to come to your door and knock on it, and then ask if they can work on your house, if they can fix your roof, if they could do anything? It's, it's way over the top, way over the top, we don't need this. That's just my opinion, thank you.
Thank you.
Chief Jenkins, can we ask you to speak to this?
Jim, do you wait a second, I think there was a question thrown out, I don't know what it was.
This is just one individual member chief, it's not the whole board asking you to do it.
I don't even know what they, what do they want you down here for, Mike? What did you ask?
I just would like what the police opinion of this is based on the conversation we have.
Do you want to participate, Mike?
I mean, I'll, I'll comment on it, obviously, we do get complaints on it, we did have an incident, some people do not register, but majority do come, they, they give their license, they give their registration, we have it on file, most of them come in. We do get complaints about suspicious activity or over-aggressive salespeople, we, we fail those calls, we send people out. In my opinion on this, it does create a lot more work for the police department, but, I mean, it's, it's up to the town to decide if, if they feel it's a nuisance. Like I said, we do get complaints on some overly aggressive, it's mostly the solar companies, I hate to say it, and some don't take no for an answer, and some do, we've had more than one instance of people trying to open doors or looking in, so, I mean, it is good to know who's coming to town, because there have been some companies that come in town, and, you know, we found out that they're not good people, but that's with everything you deal with, so. I'll leave it up to the, to the people to vote on it, we do get calls on it, we fail the calls, and we go from there, but it does create more work for the police department.
Thank you, Chief. Mr. Whitehouse.
I just have a question, clarification. What about the kids in school that are around every year, a couple times a year? Are they included in this also, or are they excluded? I didn't see anything in either charitable or...
Mr. Sealy is checking. My impression when we did this was that it excludes charitable solicitation of that, that it's really more of a sales nature.
Okay, but they're selling things when they come around. I don't have a problem with that, I'm just curious, before you're asking these kids to come in with all kinds of, I know it'll take away from their homework.
So, it, it has to be an organized sales organization, so if the Girl Scouts are coming around selling cookies, they're not considered a sales organization.
Is it not? Okay.
Jim Brown, 41 Tidy Terrace. I was actually shocked to hear that there have been incidents of people actually trying to enter homes, but don't we already have state laws about trying to enter someone's home without invitation? And can't, I'll refer to the police on this, can't someone be arrested for doing that? Thank you.
Thank you. All right, seeing no further discussion on Article 20 as presented, this requires majority, all in favor of Article 20, say aye. Opposed? I'm gonna declare that the ayes have it, it has to be a simple majority. Article 20 passes. Article 21, Mr. McGowan.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to authorize the Select Board to accept the donation of real property located off of North Bedford Street, East Bridgewater, known as the Assessors' Map 119, Lot 2, and consisting of approximately 1.5 acres, with such acceptance upon the terms of the Select Board deemed appropriate.
Motion over second. Motion made second, Mr. McGowan for discussion, if any?
All right, no, just donated land that was brought to the Assessors' Office and brought to the Board of Select.
Thank you. Any further discussion on Article 21 as presented? This requires two-thirds vote. Seeing none, oh, I didn't, sorry, Ms. Wolf. I thought I slipped one by you.
Yeah, this question, Kathy Wolf, Laurel Street, this applies to this and the next article. Why do these, why does Peaceful Meadows want to donate this parcel of land? And then the same applies to the next article.
We, legally, I think we have to take them one at a time, so I'll speak to the next one afterwards, but for the, for this one, it's a landlocked, um, triangle of land as shown on the map, so I think they've determined that it's no use, and it makes more sense for the town to accept it straight out than to go through a tax title or foreclose a procedure. It's, it's less complicated and less expensive.
Any further discussion on Article 21 as presented? This requires two-thirds, seeing no further discussion, all in favor, say aye. Opposed? Passes by two-thirds, no more. Article 22.
Yep. Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to authorize the Select Board to accept the donation of real property located on Washington Street, East Bridgewater, known as the Assessors' Map 37, Parcel 2, and consisting of approximately six acres, with such acceptance upon terms at the Select Board deemed appropriate.
Motion over second. I'm gonna go right to Mr. Sealy for...
And for this parcel, the owner indicated to the board that he had been trying to develop the property at various times, was never able, I guess either through funds or whatever situation he was in, to be able to do that, and he sort of threw up his hands and said, here, please take it away from me.
Ms. Wolf?
Kathy Wolf, Laurel Street, is this parcel suitable for building?
There's a possibility it could be, I think what the board would have to do is check with the Building Inspector and Planning Board, you know, do a preliminary wetlands evaluation and such before we were, wanted to jump to that conclusion.
Well, it is zoned residential three, which means it would be open to two-family, and I'm just thinking, we need more housing in town, and that might be a possibility if we were to sell it to a developer that would be interested in putting in multi-unit housing.
Something the board can consider.
Thank you, Ms. Wolf. Any further discussion on Article 22 as presented? Seeing none, all in favor of Article 22, say aye. Opposed? Passes by one, two-thirds. Article 23, Mr. Batchall, Cultivo Commission.
Evening all, just want to point out my last name is misspelled up there, it's B-A-T-C-H. Mr. Moderator, I move that the town amend the Town of East Bridgewater General Bylaws by adding a new section, Part 12, poultry bylaw as written in the warrant.
Motion over second. Motion made second, for discussion, if any, Mr. Batchall?
Batchall.
For discussion, if any, you go first.
Sure, the, the driver really behind this, the main point is Subsection F, which pertains to poultry must be contained on the property of the owner. The town gets somewhat frequent complaints of chickens mainly trespassing beyond the, the owner's property lines, and it's, it's tying up a lot of resources for the town, the, the animal control officer gets called in a lot, and, and the Board of Health, and it's just tying up a lot of resources, so this, this bylaw would give the animal control officer a way to issue verbal warnings and then, and an actual fine to those who allow their chickens to trans, to trespass beyond their property lines.
Thank, thank you, sir.
Yes, Jim Brown, 41 Tidy Terrace. I've been living in a backyard poultry nightmare for all... I've been living in a backyard poultry nightmare for almost two years now. Every day that it's not raining, I have up to 20 chickens wandering through my yard because the parties simply refuse to acknowledge two letters from the Board of Health and four visits from the animal control officer. As you might understand, I've done an awful lot of research on this issue. As of four years ago, in 2020, 74 other cities and towns in Massachusetts had poultry bylaws, backyard poultry bylaws, not talking about farms here. And they go a lot farther than this does toward ensuring peace and good order in residential neighborhoods. Remember, we're not talking about farms, we're talking about residential neighborhoods. And so while I appreciate all the work the Agriculture Committee did, I think what they did is more directed towards farms than residential neighborhoods. And so I move that this proposed bylaw be amended by adding the following provisions. One, the minimum residential lot size for the keeping of poultry under this bylaw shall be one acre. Two, the keeping of roosters under this bylaw shall be prohibited. Three, the maximum number of hens to be kept per acre under this bylaw will be six. The minimum sideline set, number four, the minimum sideline setback requirements for the keeping of residential poultry under this bylaw will be the same as those for farm property. What that is, if you don't know, we already have that in our zoning bylaws, is 25 feet back from the sidelines for any buildings associated with the keeping of the poultry, coops, feed bins, anything. These are not radical things. They're things that except for out in the western part of the state, where they're very rural, pretty much every other city and town has. Roosters are not necessary for having eggs for your breakfast.
Can I start before I made a response? Because here's what we got to do. Before you discuss your article, we have to vote, and I'm going to make sure it's legal in town council, we have to vote to amend it before we even get to your article. I'm going to refer to town council for one second. Mr. Clifford, because it's not his last minute, there's no...
Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
I can't hear you, John.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. John Clifford, Town Council. For an amendment like this, it really goes beyond the scope of the article. And when we say it goes beyond the scope of the article, the purpose of an article on the posted warrant is to give voters notice of the type of things that can be voted at this meeting. The type of amendments that you've proposed were not given as warning to voters, so people didn't have the opportunity to be here. My suggestion is working with the Agricultural Commission if you want to bring back changes, but I have to render the opinion that this is beyond the scope of the article that's printed in the warrant.
You can speak to the article. I know you've already voiced your position or you want to speak, but so basically you would like it strengthened? That's what your position is?
Well, if we can't propose an amendment to an article...
It's the level of, this is why I refer to town council, because the level of this change, that's all.
So what you're suggesting is that I work with the Agricultural Commission to come back with another article?
Work with them to amend this bylaw, and they could bring it back.
So if the bylaws pass, okay, we have to pass it before we can amend it?
At a future, it can be amended at a future time after due notice. So like, if we have a special town meeting in the fall, potentially you could put that on there if you, you know, work with the Agriculture Commission, if that's what you wish to do. Or you bring your own motion, but you have to bring it by a petition of an individual. But you can do that, too. I think it'd be wiser to work with the Agriculture Commission. I said, I don't have sides here, I'm just trying to move us along.
Michael McLaughlin, 768 Central Street. I've had chickens for 12 years. I've had over a dozen at a time, feed my family with the eggs from them. I've actually done meat chickens and had over 20 in my yard at a time, just doing meat chicken to produce them, to feed the family. I have no issue with my neighbors having their chickens loose, coming down, picking the ticks and the grubs off my lawn. No issue whatsoever. I personally keep mine contained, and I have dogs that would take care of any rodent population that's in my yard, which can come with the chickens. But I disagree with this article. I disagree with particularly keeping them on your own property. And it also addresses up here on the top pigeons as well. I don't know if anybody has home and pigeons in town, but my uncle raised home and pigeons and raced them. Used to drive them to New York and let them go, let them come back. What's going to happen with that now if somebody does do that? And I know we have had some home and pigeons in town as well. So just my questions with this. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion on Article 23 as presented? Do you have anything else, sir? Seeing none, all in favor of Article 23, present, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
I'm going to do it again, just because if I get, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
I get the, the moderator declares the ayes have it, passed by majority. Article 24, is Mr. Riley here, he is planning board.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that the town amend the Town of East Bridgewater zoning bylaws, Section 5E, by adding a new language in bold as printed in the warrant.
Motion, right, second. Second. I presume planning board, planning board recommendation on it?
Planning board, Mr. Moderator, held a public hearing on May 6, 2024, and unanimously votes to recommend this article.
All right, Mr. Riley, for discussion, if any.
Discussion on this one, Mr. Moderator, is this is a change to the so-called ARPU, Adult Retirement Planned Unit Development District that we have in East Bridgewater. And basically what it does is it would permit, right now, if that, if you wanted to develop such a project and you are located in a water shed protection district, you could not do that. This would allow such development, provided you do have the appropriate wastewater treatment plant as a part of the development.
Thank you. Any further discussion on Article 24 as presented? This would require two-thirds of majority. Seeing none, all in favor of Article 24, present, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Article 24 passed by more than two-thirds. Mr. Riley, Article 25.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town amend the Town of East Bridgewater zoning bylaws, Section 5, by adding a new section, Z1, salvage yard overlay district for Thatcher Street as is printed in the warrant.
Motion, right, second. Planning board recommendation or...
Again, Mr. Moderator, the planning board held a public hearing on the 6th of May of this year and voted unanimously to recommend acceptance of this article.
For discussion, if any, Mr. Riley.
Basically, Mr. Moderator, this, folks are familiar with Thatcher Street, it's developed over the years, many years apparently, as a, there's a large salvage yard presence down there. And this basically brings a regulation to that where right now it's all non-conforming use. So this will basically regulate the use in so far as the town is concerned and hopefully establish some standards there.
Thank you. Any further discussion on Article 25 as presented? Again, requires two-thirds. All in favor of Article 25, present, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Article 25 passes. Article 26, Mr. Riley.
Article 26, Mr. Moderator, I move that the town amend the East Bridgewater zoning map by adding the salvage yard overlay district as is written in the warrant.
Motion, right, second.
Second.
Motion, right, second. Planning board?
Again, Mr. Moderator, same public hearing. This matter was put before the planning board on the 6th of May, and there was unanimous vote to recommend the map reflecting the outline of the district that we just approved under the prior article.
Thank you. Any further discussion on Article 26 as presented? Seeing none, all in favor of Article 26, present, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passed by more than two-thirds, majority. Article 27, Mr. Riley.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town amend the Town of East Bridgewater zoning bylaws, Section 13, site plan approval, by deleting the current language in its entirety and by replacing with the new language as is written in the warrant, and also amending the language as is written in the warrant in red as appears on the screen.
Motion, right, second.
Second.
Motion, right, second. Planning board, recommendation?
Public hearing held on May 6. Again, with the amendment, this was voted to recommend by unanimous vote of the planning board.
Thank you. For discussion, if any.
Basically, this does two things in terms of the Town of East Bridgewater Site Plan Bylaw. Number one, it better spells out the materials that need to be submitted in support of an application for site plan approval. And number two, it sets out more fully the standards and conditions that the board or the matters that the board will consider in granting or denying such an approval.
Thank you. Any further discussion on Article 27 as presented? Seeing none, all in favor of Article 27, present, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Article 27, passed by more than two-thirds. Article 28, Mr. Sealy, Select Board.
I will defer this to the planning board, the motion.
All right, we'll defer this to Mr. Gardner.
I move that the town amend the Town of East Bridgewater General Bylaws, Section 3, I'm sorry, Part 3, Section 14, by adding the language as written in the warrant.
Motion, right, second. Is this a planning board?
So, so, so quick explanation here. The Town of East Bridgewater has had for some time a bylaw that allows the town to refuse to issue permits to anyone who's in a rear in taxes. I had a situation in another town, I was helping a family member, when I bumped into some, let's say some insider dealing that was based on this bylaw in another town. I had a discussion with the Attorney General's office and actually filed a written complaint about it. And the Attorney General's office actually spoke to me for quite a while about this and said, one thing you should have in writing is a waiver process where someone who has a problem with their taxes, and the five instances that I saw in another town were all elderly people, three of whom were in rest homes. The town refused to issue permits to allow things to get repaired so they could sell their houses. Those houses later went up for auction on tax title. This is an attempt to fix that where if a member has a true hardship that they have to validate through the Board of Selectmen as the waiver granting authority, that a waiver can be issued so a piece of property could be repaired to a point where it could be sold or made livable if, in fact, the person was still living in the house and it had needed a roof repair or something like that. Because the current bylaw doesn't address that. There is no waiver process there. And the recommendation from the Attorney General's office is the bylaw needs that. That's where this comes from.
Thank you, Mr. Gardner. Any further discussion on Article 28 as presented? Seeing none, all in favor of Article 28, present, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Article 28, passed, majority. Article 29, Mr. Riley.
Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote to amend the Town of East Bridgewater zoning bylaws, Section 7, Enforcement, by adding the new language in bold as written in the warrant.
Motion, right, second. Motion, right, second. Mr. Riley, planning board recommendation?
Planning board held a public hearing on this matter on the 6th of May and voted unanimously to recommend adoption of this article.
Any further, for discussion, if any.
Basically, it just confirms the authority of the building commissioner in his capacity, a zoning enforcement officer, to enforce the terms of permits, approvals, things of that nature, in addition to just the building code.
Thank you, Mr. Riley. Any further discussion on Article 29 as presented? Seeing none, all in favor of Article 29, present, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I declare, passed by one, two-thirds. I didn't send a motion to adjourn. Motion, right, second, all in favor. Good night, everybody. Have a good summer.
Thank you.